I know, I feel the same way, or I used to at least.
Minor teenager.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting, this regular meeting of the Here Commission to Order at 6:32 PM. We're going to start with our pledge allegiance and I buy my chair.
If everyone can please rise, place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And my mic wasn't on, so I'll just say it once more that we are calling this regular meeting to order and it was at 6:32 PM. Adrienne, if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Borja?
Here.
Commissioner Branham?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Commissioner Herrera?
Present.
Commissioner Khan?
Here.
Vice Chair Goto?
Here.
And Chair Jennings Nunes?
Here. Thank you. So we will now have some announcements from our staff liaison, Matthew Morales Stevens.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on cable channel three in our online platforms. If you wish to address the Here Commission during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk, Adrienne Van Quizz. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive Here Commission agendas, please email your request to herecommission@sgch.org.
Thank you, Matthew. So we'll move on to our first agenda item, which is approval of the agenda order. Are there any objections to the agenda order? Hearing none, the agenda order is approved. And we'll go on to a public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the Here Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Here Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Here Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the Here Commission, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. Matthew, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Thank you. So approval of minutes. Do we have any public comments on this action item?
We do not. Thank you.
I had a couple of edits for the minutes. Under the commissioners present on roll call, there's a asterix next to Rick's name, which I think just might be a mistake from last time. And then, under the staff comments, I think there might be maybe a word missing in the section about the passing of bill AB 481. These reports will... Oh, no, wait. Is that the section? Yeah. The bill requires every city in California to adopt a plan about the use of military equipment, maybe. I'm trying to remember and recall what that was. Or to plan their use of military equipment. There's just a word missing there someplace.
Yeah, I believe it should say something closer to the bill requires every city in California to report the military equipment. Is that, I believe, is closer to that.
That's close enough, yes.
Perfect. And those were the only two edits I had.
Thank you.
And if no one else has any, then I would move with those two edits to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, good. So a second by Commissioner Khan. If there isn't any other discussion, Adrienne, would you please take the vote?
Commissioner Borja?
Aye.
Commissioner Branham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Herrera?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Goto?
Aye.
Chair Jennings Nunes?
Aye.
Motion passed by a vote of seven ayes, zero nays, and zero abstentions.
Thank you, Adrienne. So now we'll begin with our first discussion items for A, our guest speaker. So we are happy to welcome tonight our guest speaker who some people may be more familiar with her name in relation to our school governing board because she is on the San Gabriel Unified School District's governing board. But tonight she is visiting us as the founder and the president of the San Gabriel Valley Special Needs Group. And so we are thankful to Michelle Hart, to Cheryl for coming out and bringing her team, and we'll let her introduce her organization.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Jennings Nunes, Vice Chair Goto, and Commissioners. Thank you for asking us to speak about the San Gabriel Valley Special Needs Group. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Cheryl Shellhart, and I'm the president and founder of the San Gabriel Valley Special Needs Group. For full disclosure reasons, as Chair Nunes, or I'm sorry, Jennings Nunes said, I am the president and of the San Gabriel Unified School Board. Sorry, my speaking skills are not as good as my daughter's. So I was born and raised here in San Gabriel. I have a wonderful husband of 33 years, two extraordinary kids, and two grandbabies. My beautiful daughter and our vice president, Megan Victor, is here with me tonight to co-present with me. And our treasurer, Mary Lou Obink, is here as well in the audience. So our mission is to work to help families and students navigate living with learning differences and advocate for equality for all of our children. To give you a little bit of background, our youngest, who is now 27, was diagnosed with a learning difference in kindergarten, and that's a picture of him and I. As most parents with a recent diagnosis, we were left thinking, what does this mean? What do we do next? What does this mean for school? How is he going to adjust to working? These were just a few of our thousand questions. Fast forward to 2014, I wanted to create the Special Needs Group to let parents know that there is light at the end of the tunnel, that other families are going through it, and they have people that they can talk to and learn from. I went to the high school and approached the PTSA about creating a subcommittee underneath of them in the year 2014-2015 school year. They graciously welcomed me, and I have been part of their board ever since. In 2018, the San Gabriel Valley Special Needs Group became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So that's a little bit about why we started, and here's a short description of what we strive to accomplish.
Hello. So our initiatives are to provide information and support to parents, caregivers of special needs children, collaborate with school district to assist staff in most effectively helping children, help parents and children understand and navigate learning, living and learning with differences. We host parent education nights, educate parents and community members about the special needs children so that they may understand and support all children. So there's a lot of things that we do as a special needs group. Like I said, we do monthly parent support group meetings every second Sunday of each month at 7:00 PM. We provide gift cards to special ed elementary school teachers for supplies, scholarships to deserving seniors with an IEP or 504 plan, parent education meetings and classes, and end-of-year barbecue. Our monthly meetings, they are typically held on the second Sunday of each month at 7:00. Currently, because of COVID and during the school year, it's harder for us all to meet together, so we do it via Zoom. If not during the summer times or when we all have more time in our schedule, we do meet up at one of the family members' houses. We get all the parents and all the kids together so that they can all interact. We talk about what questions everybody has at that time. Maybe somebody needs a recommendation for a special optometrist or a pediatrician that helps with or does well with a certain need or difference. So that's a time where we can all get together and use each other's resources. These meetings give parents and their kids a chance to connect with each other about anything. The kids become friends, parents have a network, can share resources with one another, and most importantly, can relax for a couple hours and feel safe. Anyone is welcome to attend from any school or the surrounding area. We do not close off to just kids with learning differences. For the past two years, we have, the group has provided $500 in gift cards for some of the special ed elementary teachers in the district to spend on needed supplies for the families since the students were at home during the pandemic. And last year, many families were just getting back on their feet. When the pandemic happened, we thought, what can we do? There's a need right now. A lot of these students are home, they're learning for the first time how to learn from a computer and not be in class. What can we do to help, especially for our special ed students who, it's even more of a challenge than the gen ed? So we decided that we can't specifically pinpoint certain students for a lot of reasons, so instead we worked with our, what's the term? Our moderate to severe sped teachers and reached out to them and said, okay, we want to go ahead and donate these gift cards. You know what students are in need. Please go ahead and use it so that you can get resources for those students in the home. Another big part of what we do is scholarships. And this was our first big baby, was our scholarships. My brother was on the football team. Not a lot of kids with learning differences get the chance to do athletics or are a part of a lot of extracurriculars. So what we saw during the award ceremonies is a lot of our sped students weren't receiving the scholarships just because they didn't qualify for a lot of them. So we decided to start scholarships for those students. So anyone with a 504 or a 504 plan or an IEP, which is an individualized education plan, was eligible to get a scholarship. And we have so far given out 30 scholarships totaling in $19,400. That's over the past seven years. Special education nights. We host parent education nights. We are fortunate enough to have a great relationship with special education local plan area, which is also known as SELPA, and have taken advantage of the classes they have offered and special classes they have created for our group. They include classes like IEP basics, what parents wish they knew, what is SELPA, alternative dispute resolution, and tips for effective communication, and problem solving in the IEP team process.
A very important parent-to-parent meeting that we host, which is on your screen now, is a hands-on experience or simulation that lets the participants experience some of the challenges and frustrations that people with language-based learning differences face each and every day. There were six stations set up in the library at Gaberlino, and each activity is eight minutes. I can personally tell you that at the end of that evening, I was mentally exhausted. It was a real eye-opener to what my son experiences 24/7, even now in his adult life. My parents came to that as well, and afterwards they had a new understanding and small glimpse at the learning challenge and the effect that it had on every aspect of my son's life. It is an important exercise for teachers, caregivers, family members, other students in general ed settings, and anyone so that they have more compassion, empathy, and appreciation for people with learning differences. Our fun thing at the end of the year is a barbecue. So we get all the families and all the kids together. It's a chance for all of us to get together and just have fun. They did water balloons, throwing at each other, cornhole, corn, is it called?
Pole.
Pole, thank you. And just had fun. It was held at Arcadia Park, and we had about 50 families show up. The kids get a chance to play and interact with each other. And it's typically very difficult for our special needs kids to develop a lot of really good relationships. And so it's a good chance for our kids and our families to get together and try to connect again and get those relationships formed. Next, we had our iPad. So this actually was at one of our board meetings. I decided to present it there for our recipient. And as part of our fundraising activities, we'll speak about in a moment, one of our raffle prizes was an iPad. So at the drawing, the person that won the prize asked it to be donated back to one of our families that needed an iPad. We reached out to some of our parents and awarded the iPad to a student by the name of Connor. Connor has a rare chromosome disorder. There's still not one other person with Connor's chromosome deletion or translocation. He's now a freshman at Gaberlino. He loves to play soccer, and he loves trash trucks. Connor requires special apps on an Apple device, so we were honored to provide him this iPad so he was able to use it for school and on the weekends.
Prior to the pandemic, for seven years, we have been hosting our annual charity golf tournament at San Dimas Golf Course. This is our main fundraiser for funds for our group. This is how we provide all of our scholarships, a lot of the barbecue supplies, how we provided the gift cards for the sped students. This is it. It takes months, if not a full year, of planning. Wonderful donors of gift cards, prizes, so much more. We can't do it without our golfers, volunteers, family, and friends, and we're hoping to start back up next year. We already have a tentative date, and we are so excited to get the ball rolling. We hope to see anybody who's a golfer there next year. Again, this is just our baby. It's a lot of hard work, but it's amazing to see everybody in the community, the school. It started with the school. We used to do it joint with the athletic boosters. That's right. And then they decided that they didn't want to do it anymore, so we took it on all by ourselves. And it's a lot of work. But again, seeing everybody from the community, the school, come together for our kids, it's just amazing. And our new one. So because we were unable to host a golf tournament this year, or for the last two years because of COVID, we had to figure out how can we replenish some of these funds that we have had to give out because of the gift cards. So my husband actually came up with this, and it is, we're big Dodger fans, a Clayton Kershaw signed 2020 World Series jersey. So we secured the jersey. It is now being, it's up in a frame at the boat, Clearman's Galley. And you can get raffle tickets for $5, which we also have some with us today. And the winner will be chosen after the last Dodger game of the season. Currently, we are at...
Twenty-nine hundred.
Twenty, tickets sold?
No.
Or $2,900. It's an amazing raffle, or it's an amazing fundraiser. Try and get the ball rolling again. Try and get some funds back for the kids so that we can go ahead and do more scholarships next year. Our goal is to always do more, more, and more. And another way we try and raise money is through Amazon Smile. So once we got our 501(c)(3) status, I went ahead and signed us up for Amazon Smile. It's an easy way to donate. You just simply designate the San Gabriel Valley Special Needs Group as your charity in Amazon Smile. We receive quarterly payments from the purchase you're already making. It doesn't cost anything extra to you. The group benefits from it. And as of right now, we get 0.5% of whatever you purchase. So not much, but every little bit helps. And currently, we do have a website, sgvspecialneedsgroup.com or .org, where you can find information about our parent meetings, if the barbecue's coming up, whatever events we're hosting. And also part of that is a resource page. It is a 28-page document that you can also download PDF format onto your computer, and it has state websites, names, addresses, phone numbers, websites of attorneys, of doctors, special camps, zoos, everything that caters to kids with learning differences, so that they really get to experience everything that other kids do and not have to feel different or left out.
And a lot of those resources our parents actually used over the summer and during COVID, because a lot of them are tied in with the school districts, different recommendations that they had for our kids during COVID and during the summer. So the very last page actually has a lot of the links that are associated to, I pulled all of the different school districts around our immediate area, and all of those links are within there too. So it kind of ties in with the individual districts too, and what they're trying to accomplish.
There's camps, special VIP teams for soccer, swimming. There's even a special cruise for families with special needs. The specialized one-on-one services where qualified staff is with you every step along the way, including engaging with children, singing with them, hugging with them, swimming and eating with them, calming and soothing them to keep them safe, the things that you wouldn't necessarily think of if you didn't have a special needs child, like priority boarding, private master drill away from other passengers, personalized excursions, special pool time with adaptive equipment, and most of all, peace of mind. There's also special showings at AMC theaters every second and fourth Saturday, family-friendly movies, and Wednesday evenings for mature audiences. The family-friendly times provide an inner environment that's a little quieter and a lot brighter. Getting up to dance, watch, and sing and shout is all part of the experience. I encourage you guys to check out our Special Needs Group website on your own. We have some great resources and just some fun things on there. But other than that, thank you so much for inviting us to take part and present this to you guys tonight. If you have any questions, please let us know. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Commissioner Fitzsimmons here. How many children or adults do you serve with learning differences? There's a range. When we first started, it was approximately 30 families. We're up to about 65 families. Families come and go depending on where they are in the school system. I do actually have a lot of parents that come back and help me even after their child has graduated, like I've done, to give back to those new parents that are just coming in to help share their experiences. Any other questions?
Yes.
I want to thank you for a great presentation. I wanted to find out, how can you, how do you recruit the parents? How, you know, how do the parents get this information?
So there's several ways. Parents notify each other when they're seeing difficulties because a lot of the parents kind of talk to each other over the summer and in classes.
It's a tight-knit community.
And so they'll tell us that there's new families coming in, and they'll introduce them at either the end-of-year barbecue or one of the parent support meetings. And then also, since I am on the school board, I do talk to the special ed director and let her know that our program is available. So that's another, we don't get a lot that way, but whenever we host anything at the district level, we make sure that it goes out to our special ed parents at the district. And then another way is just sending out my emails. I'm on all different sites. And so next door, actually, I've had at least 10 parents within the last six months reach out and just say, I've heard about your group. Can you send me a flyer? And so we're getting our word out that way, too.
Great. So as you know, my other is a high school counselor, and so I'd love to share this with the other counselors because we are all part of that IEP meetings, and we can get more families in.
It is. Thank you. We appreciate any kind of, you know, communication that we can have, and that's why we really wanted to present to you guys tonight. And thank you, Mr. Herrera, for stopping me in the Parks and Rec office, and Matthew for coordinating everything, because there's not a lot of people other than the special ed community that know about us. And I really encourage that if we do have another one of those presentations or simulations, that I'm going to send out an invite to all of you because you do not know unless you have a learning difference what it's like. I mean, like I said in the presentation, I was just exhausted, mentally exhausted by the end of that night. And that was only an hour's worth of trying to figure things out. Our kids do it 24/7. Thank you.
Wait, I have a couple, any other questions? A couple questions.
Yes.
Where is your main draw area? Are most of your families from San Gabriel, from San Gabriel Unified School District, or from San Gabriel? But is it open to a wider audience in terms of San Gabriel Valley?
Yeah. So the way that we got started was with South Pasadena. My mom and I just trying to explore more on my brother and helping other families in the area. South Pasadena High School or Unified School District?
Yeah, the district.
The district was hosting something on a special needs event. So my mom and I went, and we were like, oh, my God, this is amazing. This is what we need to bring to San Gabriel. We know so many other families that could benefit from services like this. And now that Matthew, I think at that point, was at the end of high school, maybe just out of high school, I know he was over 18. So that's where we decided, okay, we're going to try and do this for the San Gabriel level. And so when we originally started, we were just the San Gabriel Special Needs Group. But when it came time to doing our 501(c)(3) and deciding on names, we decided San Gabriel Valley because we do really want to expand and not, sorry, not just have it in the city of San Gabriel, but we want it open to all the surrounding communities as well.
And just in terms of, we now know that words and labels can really bias us. And so I took note that learning differences is the term that you...
Yes. It is not a disability.
...is now, not disabilities. And so that's something...
It's just a learning, they just learn differently than the rest of us, and that, that's it. Than the gen ed.
Thank you for, for teaching us that today. And then two more questions. The one, kind of in a one-word answer. If you have someone, if you have a child of school age that you think has a learning difference, where do you start? It is so confusing. Like, what should be the first step for that parent?
To go see a psychologist and get the diagnosis that is required at least for school. That was one of our challenges when Matthew was in elementary school. We had problems in kindergarten. He didn't even know the difference between a letter or a number, much less what a number or letter was. And so he wasn't diagnosed until he was in second grade, because a lot of the people wouldn't evaluate him that early, saying it's just a learning curve and he's just too young. So we ended up going when he was in second grade. We kept him at Washington Elementary until he was in fourth grade. And then we became aware of, it's called the SDC class, Special Day Class, over at Wilson. We really hesitated, because we thought it was for people that were more severe than he was. So we dug our heels in and said, "We're not going to send our son there." We went and saw it and fell in love. Great program. Our district has changed a lot, where there are now inclusion classes at all grade levels, et cetera. So it has changed quite a bit. And, you know, I'm glad to be part of that change.
And is that something that the school administrators can help the parents navigate? You don't have to go find your own private psychologist necessarily.
No, and they can evaluate and recommend, but it does take a diagnosis from a physician, a psychologist to be able to say specifically what that disability is.
And then my last question, I'm also kind of on our here commission and wearing your several hats as governing board and as the president of this group, is would you be interested in maybe a presentation to our police department? Because we've all heard kind of tragic stories of police departments or law enforcement interacting with young adults who have learning differences or who have special needs, and it just ending tragically, because it isn't understood how to deal well with them? Is that something that your group would be interested in doing?
Definitely, and the fire department too, because we've noticed, and this was something that I tried to do like six, seven years ago, was try to figure out a way that can identify that home is having a child or somebody with special needs. Because when you have an autistic child, they don't want to be held. They don't, if you're trying to get that child out in an emergency, and it's not a parent or somebody that they know, they're going to freak out. And if you don't understand how to handle that, then it's a problem. So yes, I mean, that, that's something, and I actually talked to Chief Harris about it when he first, sorry, my mouth is dry, first came on board. But it didn't go anywhere. And I'm sure it's just because he was new at that point, but.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Cheryl, now that you're a 501(c), you should be able to get some funding from the state. That's one. And the question I have with the daughter is now, I feel the pain of mother. How do you keep yourself motivated and be attached to this program?
I love my brother so much. I just, growing up with him, I don't want to get emotional. There was days that he would come home from school and just say, "Oh, someone was picking on me today," or "They called me names," and I would, what's their name? "I'm going to go find them tomorrow." And he's like, "No, Megan, it's okay. They don't understand." But I, I know, and it's okay, they don't understand. And just to see what it was like for him, and now to have two boys of my own, and to know the statistics of learning differences with boys versus girls. It's one in, one in, two, one in three, one in four? One in four boys have some sort of learning difference, whether it's ADD, ADHD, or autism. So it just really wants, it motivates me to see what he's been through. And we never thought my brother would have a full-time job. We never thought that he would be as far as he is, but now he's management at his current work.
Six figures in the bank, I mean.
Oh, my God, yeah, this kid is amazing in the things that he's accomplished. And it's like, okay, it's, it's not the end of the world like you think it is when you first hear that diagnosis. And I'd love to be able to help other families see that and get to know these kids, because they are the sweetest kids that you will ever meet. They're just so nice.
And we wanted this to be a family legacy. That's why we created the 501(c)(3). So that it can continue and just hopefully help a lot more people. Our thing is just the funding and trying to get, I've written, I've tried to write grants. I don't do well. You know, it's not my forte. I'm a banker by trade. I'm an audit and compliance officer for a major bank, so that's not something that I typically do. So Megan's been great with helping me navigate, you know, the websites and all that kind of stuff. So while I've, I've been the driver when he was little, she has definitely been the driver with the Special Needs Group. I'm still obviously, you know, I host all the meetings, and Megan is out in Rancho Cucamonga and with the two boys. You know, I drag her as often as I can, and with the golf tournament, she and her husband are like, and Mary Lou, completely the neck leading the head. So I appreciate, you know, anything that, if you guys know of any golfers, or if you, you know.
Know of any resources, like the state funding, that's huge. I will be looking into that tonight. Anything, any little bit helps. And I really believe that it's all these, these small groups helping each other and relying on each other and showing each other how to do it. That's how we get the word out. That's how we help more families. That's how we get, we come together as a community.
And then the recommendation of, you know, speaking to Chief Harris and then the fire department too. I think that that's important too, because there's a lot of misunderstanding out there. And I'm sure it's not because of not wanting to help. It's just not knowing what you don't know.
Well, thank you so much for being here with us this evening. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Herrera.
Just one last thing. Matthew, is there a way to get, if we haven't done so already, provide the link to a resident somehow? Maybe helping promote the program? I think what they're doing is phenomenal, adding a website, the website on our city link. I don't know if that's possible.
So the video is always pushed on the following city beat. So that would be one way that the community would hear about it. We typically don't advertise for specific groups through like social media or those outlets. As our, the Community Services Department, we do have like a resource page, and we're, I think, getting a little bit stronger on that. So we would be happy to add your resource on there as well. Those are the things that are coming to mind right now, unless you have something specific, but I think those would
Something that's start.
Be helpful as well.
That's a start.
Every little bit helps, thank you so much.
And Cheryl, I just want to say, you know, you mentioned me, but it's all you. You know, I saw you coming in determined into that hallway and trying to meet with Matthew. And, and you spoke your mind, and you told me what you're doing, and I could see the passion. You know, I can see the passion in you and your family and your group doing this. It takes a great deal of effort to get things done. And you have, it seems like, a strong group behind you. And I just want to commend you for doing this and just for not only limiting yourself to, to the city of San Gabriel, but expanding your wings, because what you're doing is significant. And it's reaching so many people and so many hearts. I have a, I've had multiple encounters with people with, can I say special needs? I don't know.
Yes, special needs, learning differences.
In my block, I had one individual that lives in my block, and he's just the kindest kid, you know. He runs around the block, and he's so happy. And whenever he sees my little doggies, he comes and he wants to play with them, and he wants to hug them. And it's just the most heartwarming thing. And what you guys are doing is just, it touched my heart. And, and just keep doing it. I know you touch the heart of many, like Connor, he looks so joyful there. And just continue doing what you're doing, and whatever we can do to support, we're here. City supports you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the perfect closing.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Before you leave, because I know the city council takes pictures with all of their guests. We never take any pictures. And Commissioner Herrera wants us to start kind of a photo, you know.
Okay, good.
History. So would you mind just joining us up here to take a picture, please?
Thank you, thank you.
Did you, did you want to do a five-minute health break?
Oh, sure, in the car, I do.
Do I need to take a vote, or can we just call?
I'm fine with just doing.
Okay. So we're going to take a five-minute health break, and we will resume at 7:15.
Brenner.
Okay, thank you. So we are resuming our meeting at 7:16 PM. And we'll start with discussion item 4B, which is our annual work plan. So commission members are going to continue on the approved 2020 annual work plan. The work plan items of primary focus tonight are going to be development and implementation of programs and events, specifically the San Gabriel Mental Health and Wellness Expo, as well as hosting a booth at National Night Out. And then we can finish up with speakers, if there is any information there, and on item 7B, which is the police department data collection. So we'll start with our San Gabriel Mental Health and Wellness Expo. And Commissioner Brenner is our lead there.
Thank you, Chair. So.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Brenner, before we get started. Matthew, do we have any public comments on this discussion item?
We do not.
Thank you. So the time for public comment on this item is now closed. Please take it away, Commissioner Brenner.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the updates about the San Gabriel Mental Health and Wellness Expo. Our commissioners Borja Khan and I went and toured the area. So we were talking about ideas that we were having for locations of the workshops and booths. I did send in the form to request the presentations from the LA County Department of Mental Health. So I asked for three separate workshops, which are anxiety disorders, grief and loss, and then childhood anxiety and depression. And we're hoping, because they can do each of those in multiple languages, so I requested English, Mandarin, and Spanish for all three. So the thing is, we're going to have to have three different spaces to do presentations. And she did request like either a smart TV or like a projector setup for each space. So we're still a little bit, like, I'm not exactly sure which spaces we're going to use for the three locations. We can do one in kind of that, I don't know if it's like an entry hall to the right of the kitchen. We can do one in kind of that, I don't know if it's like an entry hall to the right of the kitchen area.
The lounge?
Yeah, and then the other, on the other side of the kitchen, that other, like, it looks like.
Grapevine room?
Yeah, um, and then, I don't know if we wanted to do the tent for the third one, or what would be?
So the, were you, the first one, were you referring to the Padilla room, which has the carpeted area attached to it? Like, you step down into the carpeted area?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's the Padilla, yeah.
Just like a combined space, that, that way it has a larger capacity?
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know how many participants we're going to have, um, you know, I, we would love it to have as many as we can have, but, um, yeah, they kind of have to be separated. Because the lounges, I don't think we can do the lounge and the, yeah.
Yeah, the lounge by its, on its own, would probably be pretty small. We have hosted health and ed lectures for our seniors there, but we typically, you know, are anticipating about fifteen people. So, and that's just like theater-style seating, so it accommodates that without an issue. But anything beyond that, especially with, that was pre-COVID, so now that we are in this large surge, it probably, I wouldn't recommend that, seeing as I wouldn't know where, where we would be at in September. So I think a, as far as a staff and setup, and we can definitely make the tent, Padilla room, and grapevine room work, if that's what the commission would like.
Yeah, I think that that would be great. The only thing, um, I am a little bit concerned about is if we have any outdoor, like, music or announcements or things like that going on, if that's gonna interfere with the sound in the tent.
I think the tent is, is the one that's pretty far, um, back. I think it's kind of insulated over there, and so probably that would be okay, I would think, and.
Okay.
My suggestion might be that the childhood anxiety and depression go in the tent, because it might attract a larger crowd and more youth or children, and so it's kind of open and lends itself to small children running around, or, you know, that kind of thing, and then.
Well, maybe we can do that. I think the, the thing that we were thinking about is having them run simultaneously in the three different languages. So, because there wouldn't be any, um, any conflict that way, so if somebody wanted to attend all three, they could attend all three in the language that they speak, um, at three different time slots. So we're gonna have three different time slots, three different languages, and so that's why we were wanting to do the three separate spaces, so.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm just saying, in terms of which space for which thing, I was wondering if you put the, the childhood, um, depression and anxiety outside. The Padilla room may be the anxiety disorder and grief and loss in the grapevine room.
I think what, I think what, yeah, I think what the commissioner is saying is that the, the childhood, um, depression will run in all three locations simultaneously in different languages, so.
So each, each space is a different language is more what it is.
So, I think, um, do you know what the, what the capacities are for? I know we were trying to do a preregistration, so we could kind of tell, so I don't know if there's a difference in how many people are, what capacity for each of the rooms, or.
They're pretty large. I feel like we're not gonna have a capacity issue in either of the spaces.
Can we divide the big hall into two rooms, or no?
The Padilla room?
Yeah.
Um, you could, it, it, sound-wise, it would not work out very well.
Okay.
Um, that, that room is pretty echoey, um, so if there's more than one person talking, you're, you're conflicting already. So that's the downside of that room, unfortunately. But as, as far as capacity, it, it's not as big as it looks, um, but it, it can host, I think it's ninety-eight-person dining style, two-hundred-and-ten theater style in the Padilla room, and then the grapevine room is just slightly smaller. But that's not keeping in mind social distancing or anything like that, so you could most likely do eighty in the Padilla room, or seventy-five, seventy in the Padilla room without too many concerns, if you have the doors open and things like that, um, depending on how cautious you're wanting to be. And then, of course, the tent area would be less of a concern, that's probably the largest space, and then like the grapevine room being the smallest. I think you would have no issues, you do lose some space since the screen comes down, because it's built in in that room. But you would have no issues getting seventy in there, if you wanted to.
I think that's enough, I mean. Um, I did also ask, so they have a mental health and stigma, um, presentation as well. And I asked them if it's possible to have that, um, kind of just as an introductory, kind of truncated presentation that we can use, um, kind of in our welcome message. So, and I, I, I'm wondering if anybody has opinions about the order of the presentations? I currently have the grief and loss first, the childhood anxiety and depression second, and then the anxiety disorders third. But we can change that around, if that's, okay.
I, I, the only question I would have logistically is, are you thinking that you will have people stay in the same room for the next presentation in their language, or do you think you will mix it up? Because I'm not sure if the tent will be as air-conditioned necessarily as, like, some of the rooms, so. But then I know moving people sometimes is, logistically, it'll take a little bit of time to move people to different rooms, but just wanted to put that one out there.
If, if you wanted to, to rotate the pre-presenters, you could, I mean, the, the layout would stay the same, the TV would still be there, or whatever, maybe the laptop, we could even have it queued up if, if that works better for you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion either way, if people do.
I think it might be easier for the presenters to stay put, so that they don't have to unplug computers and put them back, yeah.
But the only, I, I get it, both sides, but the only thing, I, I get your point, that people get restless in the same area, and that you're gonna have somebody with the, through the three presentations, maybe you can have the instructor or whoever's gonna be, be leading that, that presentation, just grab their group, okay, we're gonna have the presentation here, but then we're gonna move over here, okay, let's move. And then you have the whole group, like a little classroom setting kind of thing, where, okay, let's follow me to the next room, and then let's rotate. I think that's where you were.
I guess that's assuming that people would attend all three presentations, and they may or may not.
Right, right.
And the presentations, well, maybe I should ask, they're not going to be back-to-back-to-back, right? There will be space in between for people to.
Breaks?
Leave and go do, you know, enjoy the rest of the fair, or go and then come back, so is it going to be like one an hour, and the presentations are half an hour, or what, what is the schedule, what does the schedule look like?
So we're hoping that we'll have at least like a fifteen-minute, um, time for people to, you know, move around and, you know, do what they need to do, but they, she did say that the presentations, presentations can be up to an hour long, um, and maybe longer depending on question and answer, so, I maybe want to let them know that our timeframe is like, let's stick to forty-five minutes, so we can have the time to stretch and, um, move to the next location, or even, you know, go and check out the fair if they want to.
The advantage of having the language in one particular room is, you know, if someone shows up later, then who's gonna be telling them, oh, well, it's changed to over there, so we could just say all the language for this group will be in this room, and the other language in that room, so, keeping it the same.
And it's probably not gonna be the same group, unless you have some diehards that are willing to go through the whole thing, you know, you're right. So I think it's easier for us, too, right, to keep it in one location, and just giving them a fifteen-minute break, so they can go and check out whatever we have available outside the games, I don't know what we're gonna have. Good, cool.
Okay, so, um, sorry. Adrian, um, made a draft flyer. I don't know if you want to put that up? So Commissioner Brynhog, are, are the the presenters in language, they'll be doing all three workshops, so there will, there's only three presenters, and they, they're gonna do all three workshops? I'm not sure. Okay. We just requested the workshops, and I'm not sure how they're gonna do it, but I can be in, um, communication with Nora, who I'm talking to at the Department of Mental Health, to clarify. I just wanted to clarify that we have all the equipment that we need, and the space is set.
So that was like about three TVs or projectors, right? Potentially?
Yeah, I think if we have like a projector and a screen, or, um, three smart TVs.
It's also in your agenda packet as well, if you wanted to take a closer look.
So as we get closer, and we solid, um, we, we confirm the speakers and the, the subject matter, can we add that to the marketing, um, in terms of those, those three lecture topics or presentation topics? And the times will go on, so is the idea maybe to start at twelve-thirty with the first presentation?
Yeah, I think we can add details to the flyer, as well as, I think maybe we'll do an Eventbrite or something to have preregistration or RSVPs.
Can I, can I just note, I know that we've been mentioning calling it San Gabriel Mental Health and Wellness, and it's San Gabriel Mental Wellness and Health, but I like this, how, mental wellness and health, I think I like it this way. It sounds nicer.
The only thing I would say about that is that it's not a health expo, and I know when we're picking, in, I do like the idea of mental wellness as opposed to mental health, I like that term, but it makes it sound like we're having a health expo, and, and that part, we're not really.
Oh, I didn't notice.
Yeah, I think people will be confused about what's offered, because we're not gonna have all those health screenings.
Is it, is it weird to just say mental wellness expo?
I, I kind of like that. I think maybe that's the streamlined version, let's just call it mental wellness. Expo.
Okay, great, I like that.
Commissioner Borja, yes, yes, so San Gabriel Mental Wellness Expo.
And if we could also, I don't know what you guys think, um, it doesn't really say anything about presenters, right? I see resources, information booth, giveaways, and more, but I think one of the key things is that we're gonna have presentations, so I think that should be in there.
Yeah, let's add that, mental health workshops. I don't know how much detail we can go into on this flyer, or how much. I feel like we're defining a new term here.
And if, if you'd like, we can provide a lot of the additional detail on social media as well, and on the website. So once all of, everything's confirmed today, we can go back, put a webpage together. Where that webpage sits and stays is a whole other question, but it's most successful to the community. So I'll have that discussion with staff later, but, um, all of the details on the presentation, whether it's a brief description, can all go on the website, that way we don't flood the flyer with it. And, but still get that information across, and we can definitely do the Eventbrite. We, we're doing that during COVID with the events, and that seemed successful. We did it even pre-COVID, it's just like getting the word out, and that seemed helpful, so that was a great idea.
I think maybe if we could add, add just workshops as a bullet, and I think we also should put on here someplace that it will be available in the three languages.
Right, oh, yes.
Maybe, maybe just like the workshops with an asterisk, and then maybe something smaller in English.
Or even, I think, see, I would highlight the languages, so if we say workshops in English, Spanish, and Mandarin, and instead of informational booths, just put booths, you know, if we're looking for ways to kind of put it all in that space. Hopefully, you can fit it there, maybe in a smaller font, but, but to highlight that it will be in multiple languages.
And I, oh, sorry, oh, weird. We were hoping the booths actually would be interactive activity booths, and so maybe that's what we would put instead of informational booths, um, because we're hoping like each one would be very interactive. And so I think we, I do want to talk about the letter and the booth, um, form after as well.
And, and as far as this, I know we, we're, um, talking about putting that we're gonna have different languages. Can we also, um, get the flyer printed in different languages, so that we can share it in particular, I want to share with my, with the, and WeChat, within my, my social group?
From a staff perspective, we, we definitely can. It takes a bit longer to make sure that it's accurate.
Right.
Um, so if, if the commission's okay with it, we'll complete all of the other items first. While we're waiting for everything to get reviewed, it'll, it'll just be a bit behind.
So the translations will be behind, but we can have the English version first? Is that okay?
And it wouldn't really be that much, right, for the flyer translations, right?
Yeah, it doesn't take a lot, um, but.
We want accuracy, right.
We do things a, a bit differently than some of the larger publications. So it, it goes through a couple of different people before it's finalized, which takes a bit longer, but, but it is possible.
Got it. And as far as format, um, is there a way to, I don't know how you, how, how the commission feels, if we could get everything capitalized for as far as the, the title of the event? But the flyer looks great.
Even the way it is, it looks good.
Maybe, well, they'll do the new version and present it to the committee, make sure it doesn't look like we're screaming at people with the all caps, and, and the committee can decide.
I think she's, he's just saying capitalize the beginning, the first letters.
Beginning, just the beginning.
Oh, oh.
Instead of being in all lowercase.
We don't want to scream, yeah, yeah, yeah. Exclamation point. I had a couple of exclamation points, too.
Those are all good suggestions, and then Commissioner Brynhog, you said you wanted to go over the application and the booths also?
I have one more question.
Oh, yes.
Um, you said that the languages will be Mandarin, not Cantonese?
Yeah, I think the majority Chinese-speaking is usually Mandarin. I don't think we have enough space for, for four languages, so, what, do we have other input about that?
Well, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a traditional form to put it in that both languages do understand it. Is that correct, or correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows, I, I think.
Are we speaking of the flyer or the presentations?
The flyer.
So Commissioner Fitzsimmons is speaking of the presentations, I think you're speaking of the flyer.
Right.
Um, in terms of the city, I think the only, because we discussed this when we were doing the translations for the agendas, the, the, in terms of percentages of people who speak a language other than English, and what would be required from the city, it is, I think Chinese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, actually, Spanish, and English. So, um, while Cantonese might be spoken by some, my understanding is Mandarin is, is a smaller population, and so Mandarin is going to be, is going to reach more people. So our, and it'll be consistent with our presentations, if we do our presentation in Mandarin, then we do the flyer in Mandarin also.
We would love, you know, to have it be accessible to as many people as possible, um, but I think it being our first year, and I think having the three different languages is, is good, I mean, I, I could see, I would love it to be as many as we could.
Yeah, having a three different languages is already a huge accomplishment, a huge change from just having one language, like it's been before, right?
Okay, so, um, as far as the, the booth application goes, Matthew, um, it's in the, the agenda packet as well, which is cool, he, uh, put the flyer in here, too, and I didn't notice that until just now. I think I can work with you, just, and maybe we'll put an extra, like, paragraph in there. Maybe stating our vision for the booths, and then we can even make a list of the booths that we're, you know, or the activities that we're thinking about, um, and they can write it down in, you know, because it, you have a space for them to choose the engagement activity or giveaway.
So Commissioner Brynhog, you want to list specific activities you're looking for, as opposed to letting the person? I guess I don't want to restrict anyone who says I, I, I can't do any of those, and so I'm not going to, going to participate.
Yes.
So I think some suggested act. So I think some suggested activities might be good, but I don't know if you want to limit people to choose one of these activities.
It's a good point.
Period.
Yeah, I think, um, the issue with doing that suggested is that maybe people will have like a bunch of duplicate activities versus having everybody do kind of something different. Um, and we were hoping that there would be, you know, different mindfulness activities, whether it be breathing exercises or, um, you know, tracing, um, things or like vision things. There are like virgins where you like change the focus and just like things that calm your, your system. So they are very like concrete things that people can take home with them. That, okay, this is something like if you're feeling anxiety, you can do this concrete activity and like try a bunch out and see, okay, this, this really works for me. We were hoping for some that maybe people can like meet a therapist and talk to a therapist. You know, we talked about the one that we'll, somebody maybe will talk about Headspace and how to use Headspace or a guided meditation app. Yeah, so we're hoping for like very interactive things. And I think maybe, I don't know, what, what is a better way to have it so that, um, there's not a bunch of?
Sure. So some phrasing that we've used for Fourth of July, because that's where we typically have the more interactive booths, compared to SurfStop where they're typically either doing giveaways or, or something smaller with passing out information is, uh, here's some examples, the examples like you discussed. And then in an effort to not duplicate, please list what your activity is. And at which point then we can give them a call and say, hey, there's actually already.
Oh, that's awesome, yeah.
One or two vendors doing the exact same thing.
Okay.
We'd love to keep the engagement up, um, at your booth as well. So are you open to changing that? Or maybe they're not open to changing it, but maybe one of the other vendors are. So, um, because maybe that's just kind of their back pocket plan, but they may have other ones that they, they're open to doing that they didn't list. So we can include that on the application if, if you'd like.
Okay.
And then do something that also says like final approval will be by either you or myself as we're going through the applications.
That's great, yeah. That sounds great. Um, and then we were also talking about when we had the, um, the stamp cards for all of the different booths, that we could maybe even make that like a map. And so they have the map with where all the booths are and then they can mark off where they go and that's what they turn back in at the end for the raffle.
So are you thinking to, to list that component in the letter as well?
No, I don't think that needs to be in the letter. I just think when we're creating the, um, the supplies for the event itself, to have those maps and, you know, so people can mark off at the different booths.
Are you going to have people sign again when they come? You know, come to, to a registration?
Oh, to get the cards, huh? So yeah, maybe we want to have like a registration table or a few where we're handing out those, those maps, yeah.
Usually the, a booth or two gives these bags and they can, we can put material in there and we can have this map and the same material. And then we can ask them to get the, uh, signatures from these booths and then for, for a raffle. That's just a thought.
Yeah, so I think we're going to have to have like some kind of a registration table to catch people as they're walking in. We can do that along the street, right? Like, because if we're putting signage up kind of around the playhouse area and then catching people when they enter the grapevine harbor, we can do some tables out there.
I, I like the registration idea. I guess I just want to be careful about making it too formal. So we, we kind of have two programs going on. One is a walk-in, go by the booths, you know, very informal like the health expo. And one is this more formal programming that we want to invite people to. So especially for those who are participating in the, the workshops, I think it lends itself to registering and maybe offering them, you know, if you leave us your email, maybe we can send you more information or resources or whatever. But I, I don't want to get things too bogged down by having people feel like it is necessary for them to register at a table and, and, and then feeling like, oh, I didn't RSVP or I didn't, you know, I'm not invited because I, I need to register. So I just want to make it very open.
Yeah, I don't, I, I didn't mean it like formal registration. It's more like people walk in, they, you hand them the, the card, the stamp card.
Okay, but they're not actually signing, like putting names and it's not a registration? A check in or?
Yeah, a greeting, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Like an info booth.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I think we can collect, like they can put their information on the back if they leave before the raffle is up and we can, um, contact them.
Do you have a, um, target for how many exhibitors you'd like to have?
Yeah, I'm not sure yet.
And that's something that we wanted to ask, Matthew, like what is a decent number?
For the space, I'm sure, right?
So since it's in the plaza, if you're, if we're looking at the space, you could have quite a few vendors without it being too congested, the Health and, um, Health and Wellness Fair. Since it was in the grapevine and the more confined space, um, that limited what we could do. I still think that that was probably plenty for, for that event. So you could do somewhere in the range of twenty to twenty-five.
All right.
I think since this one's a bit more specific, it might be a bit more difficult to find that many vendors that are geared towards this, but, but maybe not. So, uh, it also depends on how you want to lay them out. So if you're just kind of wanting it to be like a, a loop around the plaza or zigzag around, that, that would all be part of the discussion as well, but it, it'll fit fine.
That's a good number.
I think we can get twenty or twenty-five, if it's possible.
So were we looking into doing yoga, my, mental, um, sort of calm exercises and things of that nature too, I believe, so?
Yeah, I think, uh, we were looking into that. The other thing that we were discussing is having tables, um, in that back area for coping activities. You know, and it could be coloring, it could be a puzzle and this would, um, probably get students involved. I have a counselor who said she'll oversee the students that will help manage those tables of coping activities. And that's another place where, um, they can get stamped that they participated in some of these activities as well.
So Jackie, I think that tent area is where we're going to do one of the presentations. So we're going to have to do those just in, yeah, we're going to have to figure out just other booths to do them in, which I think is fine. We can just.
We still have the lawn area as well that would be available to use.
Yeah.
Could do those activities in the lawn.
And you have that many like canopies and tables?
Yeah, the, the tables is where we'll run into the issue.
Okay.
But we could use round tables for the activities and then rectangular tables for the, um, booths.
Okay.
So are we looking at yoga? We're going to do that?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, we're gonna reach out to some, maybe some yoga instructors who can do sporadically through the day, maybe ten to fifteen minute, like easy yoga.
How about a little bit of Tai Chi also?
Yeah, that would be great. Do you have any contacts? Does anybody?
Yeah, I can definitely, I think I can look for, I'll put that on my agenda.
As, as a courtesy, I might recommend that we reach out to our contract class instructors.
Oh, okay.
Supporting the city.
Awesome, yeah.
Kind of the first line of, of contact.
Okay.
We do have a yoga instructor, we do have a Tai Chi instructor.
Can you help us with that?
Well, of course.
Can you help us with that? And then let me know if you, if, if not, then I can definitely reach out.
Oh, that's awesome.
And they may not be interested and, and are not available at this time. So, um, of course, moving on to the, the next option, but just as a.
Yeah.
Courtesy.
Great idea.
And, um, this hopefully lends itself to that discussion. So a couple of things I see, um, next is our, our donation letter. And I do have one community member, we talked last time about gift cards. And I know there's some of us who are donating gift cards and George was going to be asking some businesses. And, um, there is a community member, Jean Raya, who is, um, offering some gas cards because we mentioned gas cards. And so we will provide this letter also. And, um, I just want to, I, we don't have a budget, but I don't know if you all are aware that, um, San Gabriel has a community foundation that was started about fifteen years ago when San Gabriel Valley Medical Center, um, was sold. And, and it was an agreement between, um, the school district, between, um, what's the church? Church of Our Savior and, um, which other one? And, um, and San Gabriel Valley and the City of San Gabriel, actually, that established this fund that works with the California Community Foundation. They haven't been as active in the last couple of years because of COVID, but at one time they did offer grants. Um, and I know this because of CEF, that we were able to get a grant to help us with a, a nutrition program. And so I would like to, um, provide the application to Matthew to request a grant to support this program. They support, um, programs that, um, benefit the health of our residents. So we could use that to, if we needed to pay a, an instructor to be there. Or we could possibly use it, I was thinking, um, Headspace and Calm have those, um, subscriptions that you could get for a year. If we purchase ten subscriptions as part of a, a raffle program or for promotions or banners. There are lots of different things. We have to come up with a very concrete budget to present to them and, and our, um, our information. But that is a possibility for funding and would help.
Is LA County not offering free Headspace accounts still?
I think Headspace is still free.
Still free, okay.
Is it free for all? Because it all, it says in-app purchases. I don't know, I never know what that means. Like how much access do you get to Headspace?
They have, there's, they have certain, um, courses that you can purchase, but I think there is a free, just like the meditations, there is a free aspect. And then if you want to do more, there's other things that you can purchase.
So I know at Calm, you can purchase a gift card for, for that app and, and that's a popular one with employers to provide to their employees. So just some ideas, but there is a possibility for some funding. So I will provide that application to you and to Matthew to take a look at.
Do, do you know if you have to be a nonprofit to apply for that?
You don't. You can, um, I, I spoke with the powers that be and they are pretty sure that the city would qualify for that one.
How, how long do we know? How long the turnaround? Or we have to submit an application and everything, right?
Yes, so, um, yes, it, it can hopefully turn around in time for us to, to do it, so, yes.
Worth to try. That's wonderful. So.
It's not a grant, it's just an application and it's, it, this is a local foundation. So a little easier than if we were applying to something through LA County or through, you know, the state. They are a, a little easier because they recognize they're working with local nonprofits. So I, I think it's very doable.
That is awesome.
Does anybody know the, the cost of the street banners?
Yeah.
They're about three to four hundred dollars. But can be part of this, this grant also.
So these are the ones that, that we see on the top, right? Oh, okay.
Are they, no, I'm, I'm, that's a lie. They're like eight to a thousand dollars.
The large street banners are about a thousand.
Yeah.
How much? Eight or one?
About a thousand.
Yeah, depends on who you get to print them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And don't forget the labor cost to put them up, right?
Yeah, so the, the, um, Public Works Department.